Good morning. It is nine o'clock and I would like to call to order the September 1st, 2015 City Council Meeting of the City of Statesboro, Georgia. I'm going to ask Councilman Phil Boyham to please provide our invitation and lead us into the legislative seats.
I'm at the DSC here. I would like to thank everyone for showing up here today and caring about our community. We pray a special blessing upon our mayor and council, all the employees of the city who work on it every day, do the best they can for our city. There can never be a shame to seek you for wisdom and guidance in making the right decisions. Thank you that you watch over and take us all throughout this day and this week.
All right. Let's hear it for these people.
(Inaudible) to the right, from behind Statesboro, America, and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Boyham. We'll go to item 3, which is recognitions and public presentations. I would like to ask the director from the ABC Center for the Arts, Tim Chapman, to please come forward. Tell us about recognizing Betty Foy Sanders as our 2015 legend in the arts.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing us to come and talk to you this morning. I have a colleague beside me, Sheila Stewart Leach. She is our curator and she is also the manager of our capital campaign. And she is really responsible for receiving the grant, which she'll tell you about in just a minute. But before we get to that, we are excited to induct our 2015 legend in the arts, it's Betty Foy Sanders. Mayor Moore is going to be part of that ceremony. We'll have First Lady Deal here that will be presenting the award to Betty Foy Sanders for her accomplishments in the arts and her contributions to the arts, not only in our area but within our state, so we're very excited about that. Sheila, do you have anything to add?
Well, I just want to make sure everybody knows Betty Foy Sanders is from Statesboro, and she announced her wedding here in Statesboro, and her husband Carl Sanders, who became our governor, also announced his candidacy on our courthouse steps. So it's, they're really a special family for our community.
And we're very excited, so we're hoping that all of you council members could join us on that day as we celebrate Betty Foy. And I know that Mayor Moore, we've got a proclamation also for September the 10th, and we'll be sharing that with Betty Foy on that day, obviously.
All right, and I'll take a minute just to read the, you know, the beat of this proclamation, for lack of a better term, but it says, "Whereas Betty Foy Sanders grew up in Statesboro, married Carl Sanders 65 years ago at First Baptist Church in Statesboro, and Carl Sanders announced a successful bid for the governorship of Georgia on the Bullock County Courthouse steps. Whereas as First Lady of Georgia, Betty Foy Sanders championed many causes in education, social justice, and the arts, helping to establish the Georgia Arts Council. Whereas Betty Foy Sanders has enormous creative talents in all of the arts, including painting, gardening, interior design, landscape design, and flower arranging. And whereas the ABC Center for the Arts has named Betty Foy Sanders the 2015 Legend in the Arts Awarded Nut Day because of her statewide support of the arts and education, her philanthropy to the arts, and her extraordinary talent in the arts." So, thank you very much for recognizing her. I don't know that folks in our community realize just how well-known she is around the state, and is probably as important to the development and sustainment of the arts as anybody living today. So, thank you very much for doing that, y'all.
Yeah, and then the second thing on the agenda is that we received a $15,000 grant, tourism product development grant, actually from the Georgia Department of Economic Development. The scope of this grant is to continue the efforts that we're doing at the Center for Fine Arts, which is part of their own speaking theater and project here on East Main Street. This particular grant is going to, those dollars will be used to do things that were not part of the scope of services that will be provided by the contractors that are on the job. So we'll be fitting in some additional sinks, additional drains, something for our insurance program. And Sheila was responsible for securing that grant. But those are good dollars coming into our community to help us achieve greater things within the ABC Center for the Arts. So, just wanted to thank you, Mayor.
I just want to say one thing about that. I had a colleague tell me that only I could make plumbing sound sexy and my next side.
That's it. That's all there is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I would say one of the best quotes by a public official I've seen is years and years ago, back in the, like, 2005, 2006, George Wood said to the newspaper, and it was a headline, "The Sewers Are Sexy." So, that's former city manager George Wood talking about the sewer sitting there near Mill Creek Park and all. He had a vision for what that would bring, so. Item 3C, recognition of the City of Statesboro Slim by 16, six months. Come on up, Ms. Harlan.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Sorry, I'm short. As you know, the place is on HR Department. As you know, health and wellness is very important to everybody at City of Statesboro, especially the HR department. We spend a lot of our time coming up with different programs and incentives for employees, not only to help them lose weight, but also to help them make a lifestyle change. And over the last six months, we have had a program that has been called Slim by 16, and each month they go and weigh in. Actually, they weigh in weekly, but we calculate it each month, so we've had a winner each month. And each month, we go to the department and actually take a certificate for them to hang in their department on the ball. But the person that we actually want to recognize today is the one that has won over the last six months. And it was actually 45 people that have went and weighed in over the last six months, and they have lost 195 pounds. And of the 195 pounds, this person actually lost 27.2 pounds all by herself. So I would say that's definitely been a lifestyle change. We are super proud of her, and we would like to recognize Miss Rachel Bragg as that person.
Item 3D.
Okay. I'll back you in. Our next agenda item that comes from the HR department is actually our Employee of Month. And the Employee of Month is another program that we have that fellow employees can nominate somebody in their department or in a different department that they see that has went and voted on. And I think we have a lot of employees that we should be very proud of, but this is definitely one of them. I want to go over and say a little bit of what was in the recommendation letter. The gentleman that I am recommending for Employee of Month is an advanced patrol officer from the Statesboro Police Department since September of 1996. He proudly serves the citizens of Statesboro daily through his various job duties. He portrays a professional image of the department at all times and exhibits the core values of the Statesboro Police Department. This employee carries himself in such a manner that younger and new officers look to him as an example of the officers that they strive to be. Due to his unwavering professionalism, I would like to nominate Justin Goffruth. Are you surprised?
Crazy legs. Congratulations to both of y'all for your job well done. Item 4 is public comments, and I think based on last council meeting, Mr. Bill Thomas that asked me to place on that agenda, Ms. Sue, is that correct?
Is that correct?
Do we have anybody else? Mr. Thomas, are you here?
Nope.
Thank you, Councilman Chance, for standing in the audience. Okay. Item 5. It is hard to maintain the call. Item 5 is our consent agenda. I will ask council to please review the items on the consent agenda and then ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the consent amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 6 is consideration of a motion to approve the deputy city manager's employment contract. I will ask y'all to refer to that document in your packet, because there's a couple of changes that should have been made in there that are not, and I'll review those with you if you have a second. So I'll give you a second to get to that in the packet and then tell you where those changes are. Now, we'll see in section 3, under compensation, the base salary is what was agreed to. If you go under page 2, and I'm going to ask that this change be made and approved, I mean, this change be part of the motion to approve the contract, under monthly vehicle allowance, you'll see the third sentence from the bottom, vehicle beyond the greater Statesboro area. What should be added to that is if a city-owned vehicle is not available for use. I'll give you a second to read through that. You can see what I was talking about there. And then if we turn to page 4, under section 10, section 10C, should not be for a minimum period of one year following termination, but for a minimum period of six months, or I should say, excuse me, for a period, not a minimum, for a period of six months following termination, which is in line with the six-month separates. So there's not a difference between that. Do you all have any comments or questions regarding the contract? Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries with the changes that I mentioned in the contract, two sections, six under monthly vehicle allowance, and section 10 under item C. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 7, consideration of a motion to accept the proposal of a bench with a plaque to be placed in the Rockwell Edgewood Park commemorating the 125th anniversary of the doors of the American Revolution. Martha Wells is coming forward now, and I want to give a little background to this as to why Ms. Wells is coming forward. It came to our attention recently with the concern about private organizations placing things on public land, that it was, the city is best served to allow folks that want to do that to come forward and vet those desires out, and then council can vote as to whether or not to allow it. I will say this, that this bench has been in the works for several months, is that not correct? And I know that Robert Siemens has been working with the DAR on doing this bench. So we're kind of, we kind of go wrench in it a little bit, and said, please come explain exactly what you want to do and where you want to put it. And if council has any questions, they can certainly ask you those, and then council will take a vote as to whether or not to allow it. Okay?
Mayor Moore, members of the council, I am Martha Wells, Regent of the Archibald Bullock Chapter, National Society of DARS of the American Revolution. Members of my chapter and I are present to the council with a request regarding a park bench for Rockwell Park in Edgewood. The National Society of DAR is the largest women's patriotic and service organization in the world. We are a non-profit, non-political organization whose only requirement for membership is proof of an ancestor who either fought or supported the American Revolution. October the 11th is our 125th anniversary. Our national president has required that each chapter do at least two major community service projects during this year in commemoration of this event. After learning that Mr. Siemens, Superintendent of Streets and Parks for the city, and his office would be updating and fixing up Rockwell Park to include park furniture, we thought it would be a great opportunity for a community service project to contribute one of these benches. Our desire is to dedicate this bench in a special presentation in honor of our anniversary, and to do so in mid-October. It is also our desire that a plaque be installed on the bench at the factory noting the purpose of its installment. We sincerely request that Archibald Bullock Chapter NSDAR be given permission to order and install this serviceable and attractive bench in Rockwell Park, and that it be done in October. Thank you, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
So, Mr. Siemens, do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell us kind of where our bench would be and how it would be installed, and who would be responsible for that, and those kinds of things.
First of all, it would be at the Rockwell Park over Edgewood. The bench looks exactly like the benches that are used on East Main Street. We're using those as common benches throughout. We have them over at Rosemont Park now, so. This bench will be over in the area of the newly planted oak tree that sits in a larger lawn area of Edgewood Park. And actually, when the mashup plant is done, the walking trail that will go through there will come right past this bench, and will be incorporated into the trail near the tree, so that there's shade there in the center.
Do I have any questions from this panel? And do I have a motion to accept the proposal of the bench with the plaque to be placed in the Rockwell Edgewood Park commemorating the 125th anniversary of the doors of the American Revolution?
Should I approve?
Well, have us to bet. Sue, take your pick. Do I have a second?
You don't need to guarantee.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And I'm just going to let Councilman Rich right there, is that an aye?
That's a no.
I just wanted for the record. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And please let us know when the dedication of the bench is going to be.
I will dedicate.
All right, appreciate it. I know Councilor Wicks want to be official on that one. Okay, item 8 is notification to city council that the terms of service for planning commission members are going to be expiring and the process for nominating new ones, and how we're going to go forward with this process of restatting, for lack of a better term, the planning commission.
Robert. Thank you, Mayor. Manny Cody, the Director of Planning and Development, has made me aware that we actually have several members of the planning commission that are going to need to be, have replacements. In one case, one had to resign immediately, so that one's open now. And then the two other members, one's terms have expired, so they cannot reapply for it. And the other gentleman, Reverend Lee, has determined that he is ready to get off of that particular commission, so we have, we will have a total of three openings, and then we'll also need to reappoint Nick Props, who is the chairman of that commission, and is willing to sort of serve another term. So what I'm doing today is just making you aware of it. Sent out an email, and someone go, oh, you respond, and I appreciate that. There's an application process for that, so as you see, we'll have three openings. Not asking that we vote on anybody today. We'd really like to have a little bit more time for y'all to announce it publicly, but also to have y'all look at who might be interested, and keep those applications on in to Manny, and then we'll look at, I'll sit down with Al and Manny, and we'll make sure to get that in some sort of resolution form, so we can have, look at a public process, some sort of bidding process for those. So I've heard of potential, maybe having four people interested right now, that's great.
I have three people that have contacted me. I don't know if they've contacted anyone else, but.
I would ask that they can either contact me or Manny. It'd be simpler to go to Manny, and you can go ahead and get those applications in.
Yeah, I'm just giving them the application, and then, you know, they can go from there.
That'd be great. And then probably what I'll do, I believe the mayor, I believe the mayor is the person that presents it to the council for consideration, so we'll take whatever time's necessary to get that filled, but it's exciting to me that we've got so many people that should serve on, because it's a very vital commission.
Thanks, Senator.
They do a lot of, a lot of good work. Takes a lot of time, right? And a lot of things, it's more than just areas, it's every zoning, and Manny might want to mention that they, some of the studies and all that they're asked to look at and vet through is what, for, for council.
Sure, they look at all of our comprehensive plan, our vision development plan, our long-term vision, the design standards for South Main Street, and all of downtown buildings. Anything long-term vision, planning, and planning that comes to you all starts with them, and it's headed through that group, however many times it takes before it's been made. They're, they're an active group. This has been a really good group. I appreciate their service, they're very committed and dedicated. We'll give about 30 minutes of time, the evaluation process, and if they aren't active, they're very straightforward with the applicants and staff, and I'm appreciative of that.
I think it's important to note again, so Nick Props is willing to serve again, so we would have to reappoint him, council would have to reappoint him, and we'd like to mention the three that are going off, Rick Bar, Richard Charles Lee, and Jeremy Ray, again, have all served very well, have done a really good job on that, and I'm appreciative of their time and efforts to do that. So we'll bring it back to you once we get the applications in place.
So hopefully, that's what I'd like to do, given the sheer number of people that are going off, and obviously, I'm very excited about the fact that we have a lot of interest in those positions, but whoever you talk to, tell them, go ahead and, you know, as quickly as they can, get that stuff in, because I would like to go ahead at our next council meeting and try to reappoint, or to appoint people to those positions. So, being in a situation where having a core becomes difficult, and we can't hold up folks trying to do business and do what they need to do as citizens, because we don't have the same staff, so. I don't know, get stuff in. Okay, item 9, public hearing and first reading of proposed ordinance 2015-06. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, the public hearing is open. Manny, could you please speak to this one?
Yes, ma'am. This is the continuation, consideration, discussion for temporary vendors, permitting required such that we had at the last work session, council. We went back and visited the draft after taking comments from the public and the local council members, and added a couple things which should be in color in your packet. One is a definition for a seasonal sale, just to clarify that. And also, an addition regarding non-conforming, continuation, non-conforming vendors, which basically says that any temporary business or temporary vendor that is in place and has been so over the last 12 months prior to the adoption of this particular ordinance would be able to continue in its current fashion without complying with the terms of this draft. That is very similar in nature to the non-conforming quality of ongoing ordinance, and we're being respectful of those folks who spend a lifetime about having an ongoing, long-term establishment on a temporary basis in our city, and that requests to be back with the city. Other than that, the draft is the same form as we've been using in the work.
So, explaining a non, because I know that one of the challenges is to try to put in place a good and reasonable ordinance that addresses those folks who would not meet those standards, will put it in place, thus not conform or grandfathering them in. So just share with everybody, at what point would those grandfathered people, our grandfathered vendors, have to discontinue doing business? In other words, if they quit for a month, they would lose their grandfather in status or whatever, and I know it's in here, but I just want you to explain that, folks.
Under this draft, Mayor, if you are, if you not only are at, you have to have been in a temporary business or act as a temporary vendor for the past 12 months, at some point in the past 12 months, so as it's written, has been in consistent location for the last 12 months, and if you continue in your same form and fashion as you are passing this ordinance, then you can continue to do so. And under this draft, you stop at any time within one year, you can pick up again within that 12 months. That is consistent with our zoning ordinance, but it may be more than you guys want to go for a temporary vendor, so I just put that in for a point of discussion. You stop, and you can pick up again any moment in the next 12 months in the form and fashion that you were seeking again. If you wait 12 months and one day, then you are subject to these remarks in this ordinance.
I would suggest something, probably a little bit, you know, I think if somebody is a temporary vendor, but we, you know, the big issue was, are you temporary or are you not? And we had folks that came in and said, I'm there pretty much every weekend or every day. I think if you discontinue for longer than four weeks or set up a time, then you're gone, or whatever it is, eight weeks, 12 weeks. But this is, this is to allow those folks to come in who have been insistently operating over, at some point in time, for some period of time over the last 12 months. So I don't know, what does council think about that? Because I don't know how you can keep up with a year and a day. If you're there, and you run your business fine. If you're not there, then you're not there. I don't know, what do y'all think?
Is this a, is this a first reading of a proposed first edgway of an order? I guess I'm just kind of like, I kind of felt that council, maybe I got it wrong, but I thought council was kind of like, no, we don't currently like X, Y, and Z, how are we changing it? Now we're saying X, Y, and Z is fine, as long as you've been doing it for you. I just, maybe I'm wrong. I thought we were like, no, let's change this. I mean, if this is a start, so it may be a moratorium for anyone that hasn't done it, that's fair. And this is the first step, and this doesn't fix, and it doesn't address some of the issues that we've got. Okay, I was just, I was just... Okay, I was just, I just had an obvious statement, I just want to make sure that was correct.
Well, I think it's about what we've been trying to a consensus, because we have three or four vendors out there that have been vending for a while. There was no way to craft an ordinance to allow them, but to move forward. So you get into the, what is typically known, which is what grandfathering those folks in, and over time, as their businesses are evolving, they move, and you'll have less of what's existing there. And I don't know that we've got a whole lot of folks who fit the grandfathering in part of this, is that correct?
Probably not. Not with 12 months, I'm thinking of going back to the first 12 months.
So just to be clear, Manny, what you're saying is that you would have had to have been in business over the last 12 months?
Yes, ma'am.
Or just one day?
Is it just one day in the last 12 months?
Having been in operation at a consistent location for the last 12 months, so it might wish to track it.
So evidently, explaining that would take here pretty much, was it?
I think that is a good start, because that stops some concern like Phil had, a guy comes, sells a car on the back of the truck, a little bit of inconsistent. I don't know if it's a consistent way, but how do you, how do you document, the guy said, "No, I'm here every, always ten, I'm here every January ten."
We could look back at the temporary ordinance that had previous issues. So for example, I typically use this clause for business clients, applications actually. Someone goes into a property that is zone residential, and they submit this in my application and looking at it, but it's been used commercially. I'll go down to the folks office and I'll have them tell me the last time it had business clients, and stay any day, that date from the last 12 months. I say, "Okay, well, even though it's all residential, it had some commercial uses that invested, it's doing the last 12 months, stays on the last license and date that we gave here in the city, we were doing that commercial use of the non-conforming laws." This would be, I can...
Even if that business was only in business for a couple of days?
Even if it was only...
You were issued, and the license wasn't presentable.
That's right. And we use city records to make that happen.
People see a paylord's license and a business license. If I were to come sell one to the back of my truck for one day, what would I need? A payment license or a paylord's license?
Okay, well, if you're selling on the back of your truck, you need to identify, you know, paylord's license is defined as going door to door in neighborhoods, and that's issued by the private court under Georgia statute.
I think that he would be just determining what would be the definition of somebody that could come in. He'd have to apply for non-conforming status. Manny, you'd have to come in and...
Yes, ma'am. We would amend, we would need to amend our application for temporary vendors permit to ask them if they had been at this location previously, and to identify the dates that they can last been at that location, and we would inherit that to the clerk's records, and getting thawed within the time period that you all look back here that you all side on, and we can resume their non-conforming use.
How many, who would you say fall underneath this category of, I guess, did you, what were you saying, five?
It's just that you're, I mean, it's the folks that you all worked from last time, some of those folks, obviously. We have some recurring folks that come in for like pumpkin sales at harvest seasons, Christmas tree sales during the Christmas season, which are the only ones that are coming by, I mean, I'm assuming they give some of them...
Are all of those under the same rule, as each other? Right now, like, if we say, okay, these five are okay for now...
Pumpkin sellers are addressed under seasonal.
But the seasonal set requires this.
Look, may I ask a question?
Sure.
You guys want the grandfathering to apply to those who have consistently been in operation at a location on an ongoing basis, or you want it to apply to anyone who has had a temporary operation in the city in the last four, or in the last four decades? If I can understand your goal, then I can draft it. So we have some folks that come in, they're in the same spot every day, most days. They're pretty reliable. And then we have other folks who come in for a couple weeks around the same time of the year, and then they go away, and we don't see them again until the next season.
It seems like the non-conforming grandfathering in would apply to the former and the new ordinance to pick up the ladder. Because those folks are going to be seized while they're coming in about books, textbooks back, or they're doing whatever.
I think what she's getting at is, do you want it to read consistent operation or any operation within the past 12 months?
As far as any operation that's not consistent would fall under our new temporary ordinance.
That was...
You know, over...
I'll be more specific. For example, the Green Man is located in a certain area. I think over time, you'll have worked with the Green Man, come up with a couple of things you want the Green Man to have, or not have. The young lady that came in and wants to set up the Saturday consolidated yard sale business, we've had some rules for her. Are those rules for the Green Man, those rules of her the same?
They would be in this draft, yes.
Yeah, they would be. So even if you had already been open for a year, or the Green Man's been here a long time, so whatever we require her to do, he has to do, and vice versa.
If we use those to, vendors as an example, council, we would say both of those vendors are in operation, they have been, been at a consistent location, they've been here over the last, some point in the last 12 months. We've given them permits and licenses, we can document that. They will continue in operation as they are.
But are they equal in that? That's the only reason I ask.
To best my knowledge.
Okay, that's the thing, I'm just trying to see if someone's been in a long, that's the same.
But if they, if a peanut, temporary peanut salesman or a consolidated yard sale came to me after the passage of this and said, "I want a temporary vendor permit," then they could go right next door to those that are grandfathering, stupid people that are grandfathering in, but they would be held to a different and higher standard under this ordinance because they were here.
Even though they're operating the exact same way, doing the exact same thing, they could be side by side.
Those who have been in existence would be allowed to continue as they are without interruption or enforcement activities from the city. Those new ones would come in and have to abide by the regulations in this draft. That's what a grandfathering clause, a non-conforming clause, does, a pallet off.
You addressed the two, I mean, that's one of my parts. I don't even know who the other one would be.
We have some seasonal folks who routinely have...
Pumpkin guy, pumpkin guy falls under the seasonal.
And the textbooks is a good example, we routinely have textbooks.
But then, that would also be fall under the temporary, because they get a 30-day temporary deal, they only do it a couple times a year. So that's also addressed in the ordinance as a bump. So I mean, so neither one of those would technically be grandfathered, they would both fit under this ordinance, yeah. They're looking at them all.
They would be, well, that's how you want to write it.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what Manny's trying to say, how do you want to write it? I think the ordinance would cover the temporary people that come in on a seasonal basis for textbook sales.
So that's our next one, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what, you'd have to write it, you'd have to write that one caveat in there, and the one they're talking about grandfathering are the folks that have been running their stuff consistently over a period of time and making a living that way. To allow them to be grandfathered, at the point, kind of, they cease doing that, we'd have to define what ceasing is.
And generally, that's the time period, ma'am. Most of, in your grandfather clauses, you have a period of time that you can resume your non-conforming use, so that's the time in the ordinance. And you can stop for 30 days, 60 days, whatever we decide. You go on vacation, you have a family issue, whatever, you stop for that period of time. If you resume within, you can be right back where you left off. But if that period of time expires and you go beyond it, then the new ordinance is triggered, and you have to be held to that.
And there's one other thing to be aware of, is if the business, I mean, is that business goes without a home. You know, if they retire, they sell it all.
No Green Man Junior?
I mean, I'm not saying yes or no, but that's to be considered. If you want to allow that to perpetuate under the new orange stuff. So... Please.
It seems to me that people that have been somewhere, that have set an ordinance for a long time, and they're the same thing or activity.
Well, if they don't have a business license, they wait until...
And it seems, isn't there something under the zoning that has been paying attention? They're permanent businesses, but not, the other category of people who are coming in at the tents for 60 days to set up Christmas trees, or two weeks to set up festivals, those are temporary things. Seems like we're trying to put something that's permanent and call it temporary, and it seems to me, I don't know what to address.
We're letting five people be long-term temporary. I just, I, if this is, I guess if council and Manny is saying, "This is our first step, we're going to have a second step in 30 more days," then I'm game, and we'll move on to the next item. But I just, we haven't fixed it. I mean, we haven't fixed it because we're telling somebody that they can do this, that you don't have to build buildings, you don't have to put in plumbing, you don't have to have a fire marshal in effect, you don't have to have egress and egress, you don't have to have all the other building permits that Shore has to deal with every single day. We're telling them that you five are okay, you're exempt. I'm not okay saying they're exempt yet, I'm saying, we're going to leave you alone and make sure no one else does, so Shore doesn't have any more problems. But we're going, we're not, I don't want, I guess I'm worried those five go, "Okay, we're good." No, we're not, not there yet.
Well, then all you're going to do is go back and take the non-conforming status out of the ordinance, and that would shut down. Because then you would say, you have to abide by this ordinance, as are those two. If you're operating now, we're giving you pass. And that's what we're really doing, it's like, we're trying to prevent it from happening.
I just think we were very, very fair with a landowner and a businessman, across the street belows, for two years, I think that's about right? And his, our goal was...
And he had a steep requirement that he did not meet, that we were forced to follow.
Right, well, what we did with him, we said, "All right, we need you to check off a couple of these things." He checked off two of them, we kept, we keep working. I think what we're saying now is, you five, you don't have to check off anything. At least that's kind of a short indication to me, it's like, hey, your checklist is really small.
And it is on the...
And I'm not sure, if Alvin doesn't end up finding out, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Well, let me see, someone's a person who's fine, if a person's fine and doing what he's doing, what are you looking for? If he's fine and doing what he's doing, are we trying to find nothing that he cannot find what he's doing?
I think we're trying to set up a, whatever that rule is, whatever our goal is, if we're letting these five people exist today...
These five people, if they comply with the law, then what can this is about? What about we have to keep up?
That's why, if they were complying 100% with all, we would be at all, because they would fall underneath everything Manny had written for every other business. These five are underneath something you need, and I think we're trying to address.
And therein lies the struggle from the staff, and the drafts that have been presenting to you guys for discussion have potentially brought some of these points out for you to talk about, because these are the things that we talked about when we had applications in front of us. On one hand, I'm asking a downtown business to not only meet all of the life safety and building codes, parking, and paving, and signage, and egress and egress, and all the regulations on both the state and local levels, and the old design standards that will come in front of you guys in very short term. So we're even getting down into color palettes and material, building materials. But on the other hand, we have these temporary vendors who are held to no regulations, no standards, and those to go, you know, right next door to one another. So from a development perspective, the question is, do we have a determined standard for development? What is the playing field, and how is it that you all want us to review these occupations and enforce business operations and see whether it's...
Well, let me ask you a straight up question. Are the two vendors that spoke last time breaking the law right now?
At least one of those vendors does not, to my knowledge, have an occupational tax certificate. And as I understand the law, if you're going to be a business, you got to have one.
So are we saying that right now, the vendors that we have out there operating this way are breaking the law?
Most, probably, yes.
Okay, so the gal that says, Ms. Ellis, next to University Tire, well, that's violating an ordinance, is breaking the law. Is she currently breaking the law? Violating the ordinance, what semantics, Derek?
Probably, yes, ma'am. In order to have an occupational tax certificate, you have to be selling things, I rent space, I don't sell anything, I can't have a, I don't owe sales tax.
I think she probably read on Manny.
I think the question is, in the application, whether someone is subject to having an employment tax levied on them, is the question there?
With the microphone next to you, Al, so...
Whether someone is subject to having an employment tax levied on them is something that's analyzed under the state revenue code. Whether someone is conforming to the city of state's zoning requirements, it's life safety codes, that's a different analysis that takes place. So the real question is, are these temporary businesses complying with our zoning codes and state and local fire safety rules and regulations? That's the question.
Okay, are they doing that?
Okay.
So neither one of them are doing that. Is that correct?
So again, it depends on how they're defined as a business, right? If they're considered temporary vendors, then they're operating under a different set of rules than any regular work business.
Well, the termal has been, yes. Nowhere in any of our current ordinances or any state law that I am familiar with, it does the term temporary vendor or temporary business exist? It's a phenomenon that we talk about, it is not a legal term of art, to my knowledge, or that I can find in any of my research. Alvin, agree?
So what's the term they use for the Christmas tree guy?
There's not one. The state talks about an occupational tax certificate, which is what we generally call a business license. And it basically says, if you engage in an occupation, then you have to pay this tax, and it gives a tax scheme that cities may choose from, and says, in order to acquire and be approved for occupational tax certificate, you have to pay the tax and meet local ordinance. Well, our local ordinance does not speak to a temporary vendor, it doesn't define what a temporary vendor is, it doesn't say what standard a temporary vendor has to be held to or not. So we have had a practice, and I'm not even sure where it came from, but as long as I've been here, we've issued temporary vendor permits, extended scheduled fees, there's been a daily fee applied to that. But there's, that term, temporary vendor, is not anywhere in any of our local ordinances. So one of the goals of this process has been to...
But it's under those fee schedules?
On the fee schedules. So you understand the confusion that we have in both reviewing permits and enforcing? So that's one of the goals here, is to ask you all, as a governing body, do you want to define that term? Do you want to have a distinction between a department of business and a temporary business? And how is so, how so? Because right now, the only thing that we have to review an application under are the Georgia statutes, our occupational tax certificates, and in local ordinances that Alvin was referring to as our zoning and housing regulations.
So what I'm hearing you say is, that in a typical grandfather non-conforming clause in an ordinance, you take folks that have something which is legally abiding, and then when you change the law, it becomes illegal. So prior to the law change, they were operating legally. And so not to make them operate illegally, they're brought in as non-conforming. Very typical. So the question arises, and I think this is what Councilman Britt was saying, I'm sure you were clear, but just for my own clarification here, is are we legalizing something that was prior to the change illegally? Or not, are we taking something and giving it a non-conforming grandfathering status when it never should have been allowed under the current ordinances we have? You see what I'm saying, I assume... Because you see what I'm saying, that's two very different things. If, if what these folks are doing is allowable under our current ordinances, and by virtue of our ordinance change, it becomes unallowable, then that's a legit grandfather non-conforming situation. If it was never allowable under our current ordinances, then we're grandfathering in something that was, you know, when called illegal, or whatever you want to call it, it should never have been there to begin with.
What are the book people doing then?
I thought you were saying it's in my other apartment.
Ma'am, I actually have a proposal that I think will close the chasm a bit.
Well, come on up, it's a problem here. God, it was my-
I don't know if you like it, but I have a suggestion.
Didn't say that.
One of the areas I took, the ordinance that was proposed the last time, and I just made some, went through and I made some changes, and I would just like to, um, to note the most, um, the things that make the most difference. Um, throughout, you'll see that anything I added is underlined and anything I took out is stricken. On the third page, under exemption, I took out no more than two events per property per year may be held. I don't understand the limitations of property owners. Um, if Joe Beal has a lot downtown, similar to mine, and he wants in March to lease it for two weeks to some strawberry farmers to sell strawberries, and then in June, he wants to, uh, lease it for two weeks to some watermelon farmers, July for fireworks, October for pumpkins, and December for Christmas trees. He pays taxes on that lot? It's his lot, it's his family property, I don't understand why he can't. I don't understand why the, the problem is with, thi- this should be tied to the vendor, not the property owner. This should be tied to an individual business, not a property owner. The limitations should not be on Joe Beal and his lot, it should be on the business itself. Um, moving on to, and I should have numbered the pages when I apologized, moving on to, I believe it's the fifth page, um, under duration.
How's the section number?
The section is eighteen dash two nine eight, duration. I've stricken temporary vendor and, or thirty consecutive days, whichever is shorter. Um, and I'll upend the text. I've stricken temporary vendor and I've replaced it with temporary seasonal or regular vendor. What I'm proposing is that basically we create another class for businesses like mine called a regular vendor. It's not a two-day tent sale to buy back textbooks, but it's also not a seven-day-a-week brick-and-mortar business. Um, it's somewhere in between. So if the duration is a temporary business shall be valid for the date stated upon the permit, um, that takes out the thirty-day limitation. Limit, uh, limits of issuance, that just, uh, takes out the, the three temporary vendor permits, and it just states that allowing no more than ninety business days per calendar year. If you'll flip back to where, um, Mandy had, it's, it's actually edited on one of Mandy's slides, the printout of it. Types of permits regulated by the ordinance. I've added regular vendor. A regular vendor means the sale of goods or services by a person or business being operated out of a vehicle, trailer, or tent, similar structure in the open air for a specified period of time occurring on a more regular basis. Example, a produce stand operating two days each week, a flea market operating one day each week. And limitations on the regular vendor will be your last page, and this really sums it up for the new class. The following limitations on regular vendors will ensure the classification lines between permanent and temporary operations remain clear. A regular vendor operates less than three days per calendar week, less than forty-six weeks a year, less than ninety-one days per calendar year, they purchase a monthly permit at twenty dollars each, which is, uh, two hundred dollars a year, at, if it's ten months. Regular vendors will still be required to adhere to the Section eighteen ninety-three regulations imposed on temporary vendors as well. So regular vendors still adhere, but they're just a different class.
I'm struggling with the word regular in the, in an ordinance that says temporary, and I don't know, that just seems like that sideways. You can have a good Friday, Saturday night-
It's not current.
You can have a good Friday, Saturday night bar, I don't know. Seriously.
I, I open, I, or in town, I open eighty-four days in a county. Eighty-four days, oh yeah. So.
What are you following to the alcoholations?
I, I, right, I'm just saying, but in general, you know, you're just saying, you know, place up in two days a week, that's a hundred and four. Take out the other days, I was up in eighty-four days. Um, so, so ninety, so saying something is temporary at nineties, which I, I think, I think that'd be-
Well, the seasonal is temporary, and they can get two forty-five day permits, that's not any business days.
But that's, I guess it's tough to say, for a tattoo, forty-five days is temporary. Outside of that, it's, it's legit, it's, it's a business. I guess that the issue is, if Mandy and Shore are requiring Franklin Chevrolet to sell, to do all the requirements they do for Franklin Chevrolet, egress, egress, lighting, pavement, power, why not, why wouldn't Stephen Franklin say, "You know what, I'm just gonna build a paved lot, I'm gonna sell eighty-nine days a year, I'm gonna sell cars." Because that way, he doesn't have to do it, it's regular, so he wouldn't, he wouldn't do that. I'm just saying, that's, that's what I'm comparing, and I, the way I first started when I talked about this is, hey, I think for right now, the five of y'all don't need to worry about this on, on a daily basis of what's gonna happen on y'all's businesses. I just think that over the next little bit of time, we address it, because now what Mandy's done is she said, "Look, someone can't come in another lot next door to you and do what you're doing, but you can do what you're doing until we have some more time." And I think she said the same thing with the Green Man, if I'm reading the ordinance right. But I just, I don't think we, I don't think this is finished. I think it's a very good first step, but we have a, we have these weird definitions, temporary and vendors and temporary and, uh, seasonal, and you're either a business that follows the, the rules that Shore has to enforce or you're not. And it's like nine layers in between, actually, it's, I think that's, that's too difficult for our mayor, for our staff, to try to explain to somebody what they can and can't do.
Well, I say this, when I drive down, and I mean this, no, no way other than the lights don't come out, when I drive down the road, I see some really, really, really unattractive billboards. I do. They're all grandfathered in and non-conforming. And the day the hurricane blows them down, they never get to come back. So I think that, you know, I hear what you're saying, and I understand that we have imposed things on some people and not imposed things on others. And hopefully, part of dealing with that and recognizing that is to come up with an ordinance that will address that not happening in the future. Um, but we're gonna have to come to a decision. Are we going to allow non-conforming businesses to remain? And they are non-conforming now, is what I'm hearing, or are we not? And I don't, I think that that is somewhat not mutually exclusive, but somewhat front passing this ordinance. This ordinance stands on its own merit. The cause that we have that's problematic is whether or not we allow current, current, apparently, non-conforming businesses to remain. And, I mean, am I, am I hearing that correctly? Is that what you're saying?
I guess so, right?
Yeah, and I, and I get the struggle, but that, that, that fundamental decision has to be determined. Do you want to allow current non-conforming businesses to remain and be grandfathered in, uh, under this ordinance and considered to be temporary moving forward? To me, that's, that's what I'm hearing you say, Councilman Britt, so I guess at this point, how would we proceed on that, Alvin? Just bring up a-
Let, let me bring up another point, though. I, I also think we need to maybe draw the line in a different place, because I see, um, her business very similar to the farmer's market, and that's a city-sanctioned, um, temporary, once-a-week tents type, um, of business that we allow to operate, and in fact, encouraged to operate, yet she wants to do something private, and because it's not through Main Street, or she's not selling what they want to sell at the farmer's market, that she can't do it. So, I mean, if we're gonna operate something that is a once-a-week, from February to November, uh, tents in the parking lot kind of business, I, I don't see how we, uh, if we level the playing field, don't allow other people to do that. As long as they have the proper facilities that, that the, that the farmer's market-
It may be that the farmer's market has to come under the ordinance as well, you know? I mean, that's what I'm saying, we can't, if, if the ordinance needs to build, it needs to be at whatever, whatever design it ultimately ends up being, if the farmer's market needs to conform to the ordinance, then it's gonna look at how it needs to conform to the law.
And Mr. Britt, what is it gonna cost the city for these people to not go ahead and not do what they need to do? What are we losing? Not letting these people take a living, and honestly, I need to put that in, and honestly, for some people that are in there. They're leaving, I want, people want to know what it costs the city for us to let our people make an honest living. That CBD, we don't require any parking downtown anyways, so we shred that out, we park it without down. That's my question, what is, what is, what are we gonna lose by allowing these people to go ahead and do what they need to do, honestly?
Councilman, you often tell us that we can't treat everybody the same, but you can treat everybody fairly.
That's right, because we, at one time, we almost allowed the downtown authority, of authority to let people walk the street with beer cups in their hand. Don't you downtown, if I go down across that railroad track, I'm going to jail for drinking in public, must have given. Well, we all, everybody came up to a discussion, and that should have never-
In, in this-
Can't drink, can't drink across the street in public, should have been a drink downtown, but that was a discussion, why, but we shouldn't have shared it today.
In, in this particular matter, the staff is writing this to you all because there is such a struggle, there is not clarity in the current ordinances, and we want to treat all of our business community fairly. We want to understand what the rules are, and we want to apply those rules correctly to everybody. So that, that's why we're writing this for discussion and determination.
So all these that we're talking about are not the same?
No, sir, but we, we need to understand-
It can't be, it can't be, like you say.
At, at the business community, I think the business community needs to understand what the development regulations are that will be applied then across the board, and as staff, we need to understand what those regulations are, so we know how prominent and enforced they are.
What is this, again, I'll be through. It's the downtown farmer market, are they compliant or not?
With, that, that's the question, Councilman, is, is I don't have anything currently to hold them in compliance to, except an occupational tax certificate. And, I mean, again, I, I'm not trying to be difficult and give you unclear answers, the answers are not clear, that's why we are writing this for us, trying to bring clarity and definitions in this situation.
Yeah, Councilman, I think that the issue really is not even vendors as much as it's our staff. We've given, especially over the past year or two, we've given our staff less leniency to choose path. It's a, well, it's written, you follow X, Y, and Z. I think Mandy's struggling with that. I think that's, and that's why we're here, I think it's because the staff's like, "You gotta tell me, if you want to say yes to this, you gotta, you gotta say something." Alvin, probably, I would assume, follow it, and say yes. Be careful saying no. So, I, I don't know the answer, I'm just saying, if, 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 if the press analysis, "Hey, move forward, and let's move forward."
Well, you, I've been there seventeen years, kind of a business, and struggled with alcohol seventeen years, I know, and it's still a problem. You can't, you can't solve.
So what you're saying, Councilman Lewis, is that we're gonna be talking about temporary vendors for seventeen years?
Or if you just, we could all temporarily trade, we could solve.
That is not what I said.
Oh, I thought you said- It's a five thirty?
Well-
Along with, uh, Councilman Lewis, I would like to air on the side of people making an honest living.
Maybe, maybe, I think what we're gonna make of mountain out of a moat, I think that what we're doing is wasting a bunch of time, and then it's not for three times, and we can't get nothing done, and I go draw something up back, I mean? And my question is, who are they, who are they, who, what are, who are they bothering? What are they gonna cost the city? I didn't have that in yet. Twenty dollars a, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars a year?
It is not so much the money, Councilman, I, I certainly respect what you're saying, but staff gets calls from those permanent business owners, from some that are beside them because of not having the facilities that they need, so we get complaints from both sides, we establish, we don't care which side you pick, we just wanna pick one and enforce it. Is that simple? I think you just have differences of opinion up here, you just hold on, it might be three people.
We don't care. So I think we're saying today, these five, staff, leave them alone, anybody new, we can test the test. And that's random saying, Alvin, just pull his hair out, but you can't say that, I don't know.
Can you operate a farmer's market under this ordinance?
That's what we're saying, we're saying five, you five are-
No.
No, I think what it's saying, that if you can meet the non-conforming grandfathered-in standards to be so, you will be. Now whether that's five people, two people, ten people, that's what it's saying, so as a council, you have to decide, do we want to let these folks be grandfathered in, or do we not? And I'm kind of a Robert on that, we can bring out the, the, uh, ordinance next time, you can strike it, you can agree to it, you can vote it down, but at some point, you have to decide, are you gonna let these folks be grandfathered in, or are you not?
That's the question. Well, I think that's the answer.
Well, this is a first reading, so we think we have a lovely second reading in time. But I mean, that really is the bottom line, you don't, you wanna stick, you take the grandfathered laws out, stick with your temporary vendor ordinance, and go with it or not?
Mayor, it seems to be the staff is saying that this helps them, that this, that this ordinance, two oh one five oh six, helps them, so I think that makes sense.
Let me also try to avoid the law on intended consequences. If we pass this ordinance as it stands, are any temporary vendors in violation of being non-conforming even? In other words, have they not operated long enough to where this twelve-month thing would actually shut them down?
I, to this, to my knowledge, the ones that have called, do you all, probably in this city, would all be grandfathered in at this cost, and I would sort of feel the same.
And that kinda gives-
You don't think?
That kinda gives farmer market a rule.
The farmer's market, these cities actually need to make this one a second.
You're taking any records for L S F and Market because I have been denied consistently?
I've been denied because of the ordinance regulations, they've all been passed, but you have, um, Nellis is in a position that she's, she's not alone in, is that because the, um, ordinances are not necessarily clear on how these treat temporary vendors, and you have to treat them like, um, a true occupational tax certificate review, and hold them to all the development regulations on the city and the state.
all the development regulations of the city and the state. We have denied their occupational tax certificate applications because they don't fit the rules. And they come in front of you all and ask for permission, and they, that permission is granted, and they become this unique undefinable entity out there that we don't know how to treat. And, and so, I, I don't believe in those, the initial commitment, three days, she just started applying the last four months, again, for those that-
Um, one other question I'd like to have answered, is permits and fees, like the Green Man actually has an ongoing business license. I really don't have anything. What, what would my, under, under the non-conforming, where would I fall? Would I have the business license, like the Green Man? Would I have the thirty-five-dollar, then temporary vendor permit? Where would I fall?
I don't believe that Ms. Ellis or the other gentleman mentioned could qualify, quote-unquote, business license under the occupational tax certificate, and all development regulations the city actually adheres to, and apply to the ordinance to create an occupational tax certificate. And they don't meet those standards. So, I would be hard pressed to recommend a frequent, under the city, and that sort of package.
So, I think what Ms. Ellis is asking, what would she have to pay?
The fee we need to be talking about, Councilwoman, is not just standing on your bill, and it's thirty-five dollars per day. I don't, I think that was included in your single thesis, so, and if we wanted to change that, we'd need to-
What is the Christmas tree guy paying? What is booked at?
Thirty-five dollars per day.
Per day?
For that.
One tree, one book?
A thousand dollars, it's a different one?
That's understanding.
Can you see where they buy those books for?
One tree, one book.
What about the Christmas tree guy? I mean, what, what do they do? And, I mean, if they're gonna buy a forty-five-day permit for thirty-five dollars-
That's what they pay?
About fifteen hundred dollars per day.
See, we have left this schedule fee, I can't cry for schedule fees in front of you all, so I'm just gonna put the regulations over there again, from ordinance itself. So, we're getting more definition on how you want the ordinance to be drafted, the most of that, you know, organizational fee, the copies, we don't know. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, this discussion happened last year. We sent a letter to the business chairman, and we were in the comment, in the past, it's always been, and that's a new business office, but we opened last year, and we're planning forward to ask for a mission, and do these questions, that we might not be able to do without, if they're not heard.
So, the Christmas tree guy's been paying a, a business license fee, which is a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty bucks, something like that?
Yes, in previous years, correct.
So, he's not writing a fifteen hundred dollar check?
When all of these questions came up last year, we said, we, we were saying, we couldn't, we couldn't, we didn't have that, very easy question, that possibly paid for it, I don't know.
I know you people are gonna hope you never see my face again.
No, you, you brought up a very good point, so, I mean, that's, you know, everyone up here, everyone has an issue with the world business, it's not like, you know, I'm good at it. Then you're not selling anything, Gary, and Gary and I have a problem with it. So, I'm gonna tell you, you're up a point. Do something that we feel is possibly needed in our community, we just don't have a mechanism to let you do it again. And thirty-five dollars a day, it's insane for her.
That's right, that's what I mean.
So, we gotta, we gotta figure that out, and I, and I don't know, I just, I think, maybe, I don't know, I don't know, damn it. Because I, I mean, I think, what is the point, in my opinion, of the city charging her thirty-five dollars? What, a, a day? Because-
You know the point, it's to keep her from doing that.
That's it? That's the reason why it's like thirty-five dollars?
It's to keep her from doing it.
Thank you, Lord. Thank you.
See, it's, it's, I don't really-
I'm so glad you said that.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Because it's not like we're saying, you pay us thirty-five dollars, and we're gonna provide you a saw, or a, or a sewer to you. I don't, I don't see where this, where that fee is. That fee needs to be a high, find the, find the most, the most expensive business license, and it's-
You have a place that's all up and down the country, that has a similar type thing, except on, on the weekends, so jewelry or art-
It's just, it's just charging somebody something I don't get. I don't, I just don't, I hadn't quite, I can't wrap my head around that. There's no reason for it to be that. But it may need to be sold.
But, as I said in the very beginning, if that's what I need to do to continue to allow these people who need to pay their life bills and buy diapers for their babies, if that's what I need to do to continue to allow them to do it, then that's what I'm gonna do.
That's right. Because you got to, to, while you're selling the clothes, it gets-
At some point, council has got to reconcile with the very basic issue, which is, do you want to let people do business anyway, anyhow, on any piece of property in the city at any time? And if you don't, then you've gotta craft an ordinance that deals with that. And you've got to have a temporary vendor ordinance. Now, fee scheduling is one thing, that's, that's separate aside, but if you're gonna have a temporary vendor ordinance, you know, you've got to decide when, where, what, and how to do it. And, I, you know, you don't want to penalize the folks that were there, unbothered, unfettered, untethered, whatever you want to say, like the Green Man, and I hate to keep bringing him up, unless you space it here on South Main Street for everybody to see every day. Someday there's blue, someday there's boiled peanuts, you just don't know what you're gonna do. But, um, you know, I go back to the, don't throw, don't throw the grandfathering calls out, when it kinda takes care of some stuff along the way, just something to think about. But, I do think with the Cecil Park coming up, and we do have folks coming in here selling pumpkins and Christmas trees and these kinds of things, we've got to push forth and figure this out. So, my recommendation's going to be that, you know, council can submit suggestions to Mandy. Um, we can look at a draft ordinance again, y'all tell me how you want to proceed forward, and I'd like us to try to work through something to do with this over the next two, four weeks. Do I have any feedback as to how y'all like to do that? We've had one work session, we can have another one, I don't, it's whatever you want to do.
I don't write a thirty-two words, I just know, I don't want to hinder anyone from being able to make a living. And I don't want them to bother any other people who are trying to do the same thing.
Do you want them to have to do it in the same manner?
Yeah.
Or, or however they choose to do it?
If you ask that question, I, I think about, um, different properties and structures, breaking more, they might be selling the same thing. Somebody's doing it outdoors, somebody's doing it indoors, somebody's doing it eighty-nine days a year, somebody's doing it ninety-one days a year.
I'm confusing myself. Even more, I, I just, uh-
That's an interesting question you're asked, but I, I think he is just defining what the different business types are, and that we're running a restaurant, they're not the same business. No more than selling pumpkins is the same type of business.
I don't, I don't, who complains on Highway eighty, it's a problem in my business, but I don't see where Ms. Ellis is, 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 is competing against Goodyear right there. You know, and who don't complain over there, who are willing to force the law over there? That's altogether two different businesses. Those kinds of people have complained, you know, about, well, I don't, why y'all want them there?
Gary, I think it's, it is two different businesses, but it's-
It's what-
And if you keep going back, keep going up, at the thirty-thousand-foot view, they're both businesses. So, that guy, I think, has a, that person has the legitimate, that owns a staple blade that's across the street, has a legitimate concern saying, you made me put in a fire suppression system for two hundred thousand dollars, so, so she could pay, so I could pay my bills, this person doesn't have to do that. So, I, I don't, I don't know the answer, but I think, I think, well, then John says right.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but now you want to compare apples with orange, let's compare apple with apple. I mean, Goodyear over there, you put a, a two-thousand-dollar make-up suit on inside, and she's on outside, that's the difference, ain't it? They have to have the trolling product.
Then we have to give Mandy an orange ordinance and an apple ordinance. Right now, she only has an apple. She has one ordinance that says business. But Mandy's saying, look-
Orange ordinance.
You gotta come up with something. And that's, that's where she's-
Orange ordinance.
That's what we gotta provide. So, I, I, I mean, John, you said, what can we do, or how we do? I think for mayor, one thing, tell Robert what we'd like, and we don't mind. Either an email or a meeting with Robert over the next week or two.
And then fix it.
And then fix it. If, if you drive through Smyrna, Georgia, Johns Creek, Georgia, you don't, you don't see a lot of corner lots that will pop up tents. You drive through Uvalde or Reesville, you do, and that shows a little bit of that, that's the different cities. Which one are we? And, yeah.
I hope you don't hold you any trouble.
The progressiveness of the city, I think, is defined by how you handle something-
That's been my point all along, which is why you go with grandfathering and non-conforming so that you can move on. So that you can say, we got people that are never gonna fit the ordinance that we have, but we got people that have been doing business here forever. We agree we need to move on, we agree we need to be more progressive, we agree we don't want tent cities up and down our street selling whatever, whenever, however. But, in saying that, we also have to recognize, we got some citizens that, for lack of a better term, lucked out. And they've become grandfathered in and non-conforming, and that's the whole purpose of doing that, so that you commoditize and you move on in a different way.
Regardless of how far our city progresses, regardless of how uppity, you know what? I'm sorry, I, I'm just gonna take a little liberty here and speak freely for a moment. Regardless of how uppity we become, there are still gonna be people who need to pay their life bill who can't. There are gonna be people whose money doesn't come as easy as ours does. There's gonna be people who's got to figure out, well, do I go find that prescription this week for my child, or do I buy peanut butter so I can make him some sandwiches? Those people are going to need a place to go. If they can get last year's clothes that doesn't fit Jimmy anymore, they need a place to go that they can sell them, so they can buy the peanut butter and penicillin.
That's right.
That's what I'm trying to provide. Those people still need to be taken care of.
That's right.
You know, do, do you know what I make in a week? I make maybe a hundred and twenty dollars. I'm not raking it in up there on Highway eighty. I'm trying to help people.
That's right.
It doesn't even cover what we pay in taxes on that lot here. Those people need help. And it doesn't matter how much our city progresses, or how beautiful, how many trees we plant, and how many park benches we put, which is nice, and I enjoy those things, but there are people in this community who never get to enjoy those things, because they're worried about, they, they can't take their kids anywhere because they don't have shoes that fit.
That's right.
Those are the people that we need to think more about when we're doing stuff like this. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm a preacher, Stephanie K, now, I apologize. I'm done. I'm done.
And I, I realize, I feel exactly the same way, it's just, how do I put, and, and on the full plate, how do I put peanut butter and penicillin?
I, I understand. But, I, I just think we need to make provisions for people. I mean, we're, we're thinking so far, so far, beautification and, and, but, but, but we're leaving people behind that we're not caring for. I can't do that. I'm not making that. Thank you.
Do I have anybody who wants to speak in the public hearing? Okay, do I have a motion from council? Oh, I'm sorry, come on up, I didn't, didn't see any.
Good morning, how y'all doing?
Good morning.
I noticed one name come up seven. So, I had to come up here and say something. Anyway, I'm gonna say that you, today must be y'all's lucky day, 'cause the Green Man done come your way. So, why do y'all do me like you do, do, do? Man, all of the goodies that I keep on bringing to you. Sometime I bring you mustard, sometime I bring pepper, sometime I bring some collars too. Well, this is what I need to say. Y'all know that I've been in business for a long, long time, real long time. I paid my dues, and whatever y'all need from me to do, just let me know. If it's limited at what I got to say, just tell me. I found a rule, but she was saying that I have so much time to say. But, uh, it ain't but two gears of me, and that's high and high. Now, I'm already high, I ain't got nothing but kicking up high, and I'm going up. So, y'all, if you get this thing straightened out, what y'all want to do, just let me know. Whatever go for one, this shit go for us. Now, I don't care whatever they do have, but, I'm talking about me. Whatever y'all want me to do, when y'all get this thing, let me know. And whatever the rules are, they should abide by the rule. The one who don't abide by the rule, well, they should get out the gate. That's what I'm trying to say.
And I appreciate that. Would anybody else like to speak? I, I dare say I wouldn't want to follow that up, but come on. Okay, in that case, the, oh, come on, Ms. Ellis, I thought you were coming in or another section, but that's-
I need to thank you all, and your family, and I'm on this, this is finished, and I see young kids out there, having fun, and sell their old clothes to get new clothes that they're treating their children. So, this is why I'm saying, I can't even say why young people are, anybody giving them jobs. Just like she said, she don't pay fifteen dollars, sometimes she don't have five, and she don't even make them, but you know. But you see young boys, you see young girls, you see old people there, trying to make a doll, a life, you know, buy a kid's clothes. He had, boy, his grandmother, so he let him get it. He had all of his stuff trying to sell, so he could get him pennies clothes to go to school. That is not making, just like she said, she's not making a whole pile of money. And if there's any way that y'all can, do help her, so she can keep what the neighborhood wants. The neighborhood wants these things, that their children see. Get out and work on sale drugs, don't do all these other things. You got all these clothes, you know, get out and say, you look close to something, make you some money, buy these little clothes.
Anybody else like to speak? Does council have anything they'd like to add before I close the public hearing?
Uh, well, let Ms. Bellinger know, uh, we're not trying to give Ms. Ellis a hard time, it's just, uh, we've got, we have to have some sort of ordinance. You have to have something, I just don't, I don't come out of work.
I know you have to have an ordinance, but, you know, what I'm saying, also that ordinance where the neighborhood can get some of the things that the neighborhood wants, you have to understand, time changes. Maybe ten years ago, the kids didn't have to do it, it was like, clothes has gotten so high, jobs has been lost. And, you know, what I'm saying is, help her, to help these kids do some of the things in the neighborhood that they want to do besides sell drugs and alcohol. That's all I'm asking. I, I'm not saying that y'all would give it, it's flat, I'm giving her a hard time, I'm saying, kind of help her with an ordinance that's gonna keep her in business.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing for the first reading of proposed ordinance two zero one five dash oh six? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying no. All opposed, motion dismissed. Ten, nine, ten, consideration of motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Statesboro and Georgia Southern University conduit and fiber optic connection.
If, if this doesn't work out for Green Man, I think that he can offer public speaking classes. I, I won't be as helpful as he is, I'm sorry. This is an agreement between the city and Georgia Southern. We have been putting a fiber conduit in the ground, and we're gonna allow Georgia Southern to use one of those conduits to tie into our network operations center at Police Department, and also follow it to the city hall campus, and that's what I'll do, to get the fab lab, the necessary network and the baby. And that's what I'll do to get the fab lab, the necessary networking with the city. Also, in this agreement, Georgia Southern is going to allow us to go to their campus to service some of our needs. It's not detailed, but one of the plans is to get a route to the campus and gardens and so that we can work on the timing in Fire Station Two and Waste Water Tree. Footage is almost the same, so we're just kind of swapping services. And so we're not establishing any problems. It's just, they're giving us services, we're giving them services. This is a five-year agreement to which we can renegotiate every year before we see problems come up. It is a five-year agreement. We do not have this agreement before the council package went out, so we provided each of you a handout. It would be very different.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Taylor? Do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Statesboro and Georgia Southern University for conduit and fiber optic cable?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing to solicit input regarding the proposed military rate of 6.358 for the calendar year 2015 and outlawed property taxes for the City of Statesboro?
So good.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing is opened. Mr. Chisholm.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just reiterate a little bit of what we discussed at the last meeting. That was, once we received information from the tax, county tax assessor and discovered that the assessment values actually ran down a little bit last year, so the new construction and increase in values went down as a whole. I mean, it's about flat because of the assessment going down basically flat, which means for us to get as much taxes raised, as much revenue taxes as we did last year, we'd have to increase taxes, the military rate slightly. That is not my recommendation. And my recommendation is to hold it at 6.358. We could raise it to 6.387. We're not looking at... We're looking at loss of about $2,000 to do that. But I'm saying that we just hold it the same as the current year at 6.358. Talk to the tax assessor, he didn't feel like the assessments probably will go up next year as they do a citywide reassessment of all properties. So we'll have a different discussion next year, but this year, my recommendation would be to hold it at 6.358.
Any questions?
No, what, how many, how many years running now have we not raised property taxes?
It's been 6.358 since the late 2007 or '08, probably. Only got five year back. It's been five years, but it's just been held up.
And again, what was the major, what was the major difference in property? Because I know only Billy did it.
Yeah, our discussion, there was a difference. Yeah, it was a...
Greenbrier?
It was across from the hospital. That happened to be one of the areas that they looked at and actually went down in assessment. I'm not sure. It seems odd to me, but that's the case. And they have a reason to raise our military rate. So this was a good one.
And there's, and there's still a number of properties that have been reassessed, some bigger ones, yes, like the Hamptons, 111 that go in.
That's right. They haven't... Their assessment was based on where they were, I think, since January 1, so they wanted to build a structure. So they, it was about $10 million value on tax records and I was thinking, probably in the thirties.
So Robert, would you say that we are going to offer the same or better city services for 6.358 this year than we did last year?
I would say we're at least, at least the same services.
Same or better for the same number of trucks?
I would say yes.
I think it's just basically government can do it.
Let's just that, bigger hearing.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing regarding the proposed military rate of 6.358?
Motion to close public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-36.
Salute. I'll take the second.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Sounds like y'all were running for reelection this year.
I am.
Just looking to the future.
Thank you for that, my brother.
The mayor said no. Other business from city council, the only item I have is that the last time we had a work session on the alcohol ordinance, I believe, was in July. And as we continue to work towards a bill of revamping that, and if we continue to see problems come up with our current ordinance, which will come up next, as a matter of fact, next session, next meeting, what would council like to do? I would like to continue to push forward and have another work session, whatever we need to do to get some resolution on adopting a new alcohol ordinance. Do I have any input from council on that?
Alvin, our suggestion from the last...
Alvin's what?
I'm saying that our suggestion is to...
He snuck out. He snuck out.
What's the word? Your own words. Okay, I see. He said that he has taken our suggestions from the last, from the last work session, and he has something to present to us. I say he can get that to us as soon as possible and have a work session, maybe move the next scheduled meeting.
Well, one thing...
Three o'clock, four o'clock, four o'clock afternoon. Mayday?
We can certainly do that, but that's what she might do. I will say this, that just as a note, we have three weeks in between our next council meeting and the next one, so we've got, it's not prior on top of one another. So if you would prefer, say, maybe sometime in that three-week period to do that, or we can go ahead and try to do it, you know, prior to the next council meeting.
Wait, now, you're saying the next meeting?
I think our next meeting would be on the 15th. Those are days apart, and you go 22nd, 29th, it's going to precipitate, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So there's going to be a longer period of time in between our second meeting of this month and the first meeting of the next.
Let's do it after with Labor Day, the lead up to the home football game and everything else. That's going to be a busy week next week, so try to do it then.
I think what we're trying to do, if you want to do it on the 15th, you know, prior to that meeting, or would we like to try to schedule, since we do have a longer than normal interval in between meetings after the next meeting, it will be three weeks prior to the next one in October, you might want to try to schedule it then.
Well, before you decide that, what I was going to recommend, I didn't realize Alvin had to go, but I'd like to narrow it down, the next meeting we have, as opposed to just alcohol, which is like talking about earth, you know? We really need to narrow the topics down a little bit, and so I'd like him to maybe figure out what the areas of contention are and let's work through those. I think for the most part, we have, we're 90% there for the most part. Let's just buy that 10% and work on that, as opposed to just opening the whole thing up to discussion.
How would you rate that?
That being said, he might need a little extra time with the Labor Day coming up and shorten time between the next meeting and before. Didn't have done, so if we want to do it at the end of the month or sometime in those later three weeks, that might be a better idea for Alvin.
So do you want to shoot for sometime during the week of the 21st of September? Do you remember? Sorry. It's lower than what it fires.
I was going to say, you said her, you just walked her there. So the day on the 15th, the actual, maybe a little bit before the meeting on the 15th?
No, I think what Phil was saying is to go after that, to give Alvin time to construct something important for work sessions. So I was going the week after that on the 21st. We can also go the week after that on the 20, the week of the 28th. So what do you all think?
21 or 22.
On your Tuesday?
First of the month.
That's fine.
Okay. Either day from...
21 works better for me unless it's morning on the 22nd.
So what did, I'm sorry, John, you said when?
Either either morning or noon.
What about you guys?
Morning.
Morning, afternoon?
Either morning or afternoon on 21st.
Okay, what time of the afternoon would you all like to start? How much time?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock on the 21st?
Four. Till seven.
Four, on the 21st? Okay.
Do you spot?
Four o'clock on the 21st, here in council. Work session for alcohol ordinance.
Everybody bring a hat. Four o'clock on the 21st.
Four o'clock on the 21st.
I'll take Green.
That's all I have of council today. Does city council have any other business they'd like to bring forward? Okay. Ten item one.
Just two quick items. First is, just want to mention that you should have received an invitation on Alvin. The expansion of the fire station is completed, so we can open house, ribbon cutting on September 12th. It'll actually last from nine till one, but the ribbon cutting is at 10 o'clock. So certainly invite everybody, including the public to that. And so the facility looks great, and we did it for well under budget, and we're proud of that facility. Then this last item would be Sun Guard, which is the law enforcement software. It is online now, fully implemented. Best I can tell, it's working really well. PD is excited about it, and the officers themselves are putting in a lot of work, particularly Davey and Mary Harrison. She's, I think, on above and beyond and helping getting that up and running, and will continue to have some, some of her work involved, making sure it's functioning, recording is going as expected. So those are two examples of, I would say, staff taking sploshing dollars and looking for better ways of doing more with less. And that's one of the areas that we're working on, just property tax part down at the same. That's it. One too.
Okay. Moving on to the public comments section. The first person that had asked to be on our public comments is Mr. Bill Thomas. Is he here?
No.
Moving on. Moving around a little.
Ms. Bellinger, you were on public comments.
My name is Dan Gillis. Mayor, the city council, um, since the last time I was here, talking about the traffic that on Morris Street, I've been subtly harassed. I don't know why, but I may have gotten took out. I'm scared about the law for not revealing law. Thank God, that may come out all right. But I was told back sometime, oh, I kept coming down here complaining, this thing would happen, it would happen. I would have just been called and told me that. And they are silent to have. And there are millions, as we know, out of the chamber, just like I told you before. It's like it was with the Platinum Room around there. A million was there. I knew it was going to my building. I didn't come in before it went out there. One little boy called, told me he had here the million. But they wanted me to go out there so I could get arrested. I went, he told me, "Don't come out here," and I said, "Because we're not doing anything out here, we're trying to cut a street." So he said, what they said was, country people don't know how to sit in and hang up. Say, "Let the city people sit up." I closed my building, backed away from it after things went like it did. So I let the city set it up. Children started selling alcohol to them, which I had a contract out there, I didn't want to lose. Children started beating kids, killing each other, which I didn't allow. Tragedy started like ridiculous from happening at my building. They started getting so drunk, they're going in the mayor's house. I didn't want all this to go on, not coming from my building. Arrested four of them out there, took them to court, dropped charges before they, before court date. Guess what happened? Kids didn't know that they did wrong, so it got all put on the owner, which the owner had contracts, he had the liquor room, and he told me to him, the liquor room, building, and the building. Yet, it's there, I don't get the blame for it, simply because, you know, somebody went to one of my family members and told one of my family members that I was nothing but a country, was saying, "There is stuff I live in," and all of them said, "I'm a country thing, so I don't have to be trying to sell me anything." Let the city set it up for them. And you see what happened? Just like it is me, club owners, it was their fault. It did to all these club owners, everything that I need to say. And I'm still being harassed by jail, everything from my life, and I'm being arrested. All I'm kidding for, for what one of the city council says, is to clean bathroom. And if you notice it, it's been drunk every time I go somewhere, it's drunk, I don't know how to clean bathroom, I have to do something, so I clean bathroom, I'm retired. Let the young people have a better job. I don't need a better job. I'm doing what I want to do, doing what I always had been taught to do. You clean your bathroom at home, don't you? So, you know, like I'm saying, I'm going to keep fighting with it, but just like I'm still going to say, I'm still going to try to help the kids, because those kids got started about this. Certainly because they want to take their older inheritance away from them, what they had down there. They were just cutting, you know, way out in the country like that, cutting what's sitting, so they wouldn't be noisy, you know, disturb other people. And this is how they got treated. There was only 10 of them out there tonight. 30 police officers went into my building. I told them, and they called me and told me, they said it was coming out. I said, "I don't need them now." But when 30 went in there, 20 of them come out. And just like I say, they said the internal revenues, they adjusted internal, they were perfectly good to me when they was out there. They said, "Ms. Bellinger, we are not going to leave you out here by yourself." They closed the doors, drove around the building, Mr. Cunkabow was with them, drove around the building, closed the doors, made sure everything was secure before we left my building. But yet, I'm the villain. I don't suppose to do anything else in order to cut it, because what I set up, uh, the front. And that's what it all started with, Ms. Ellis right there. It started, I knew about all of that. I didn't know if she was coming down there, but I knew about all of that before she got out there, because it got started Saturday out there. And if she can remember, she would gain the same things that I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellinger. That's our last person to speak, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, right today, after Mr. Gunn, are you and Robert talking about what that was? I think Travis and I, we look on our Facebook.
I have no idea. Who's that?
I am...
If y'all, if y'all are on it, y'all know what it is, and you can just let us know.
Oh, Ms. Bellinger, exactly where is your building that you're referring to?
Out in Cato Eric, right off of Old River Road.
Okay.
Been out there for about 60 years.
Okay.
But it's closed down. I closed it down because, you know, and I'm still, why, keep it closed down, because it keeps trying to force me to open it back up. But I don't want nobody's kid to get killed on my, on our property.
And you said it's on, where did you say that building is, please? Old River Road, so...
Right off of Old River Road, you turn on RAB East Road, go down to Love Road, and it's on both roads.
Do nothing with us, and our guy will get us.
Okay, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.